Open Publics Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey has been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of the meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 4th, 2021. Such scheduled notice of meetings is posted at the Municipal Building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January 8th, 2021, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 5th, 2021. Role call in?
Mrs. Cohen?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Kemna?
Here.
Mrs. Weimert? Mrs. Weimert? Mr. Robinson? Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mr. Zire?
Here.
And Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Dr. Gales, would you move the approval of minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 14th and January 4th minutes, Action Items 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
Question or comments from the board? Seeing none, role call in?
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Actually, Mr. Zire, Chris, this is my fault, you should have stayed from 2.1.
One, right.
You weren't on the board then, and then, yes, to 2.2.
Okay, so I am staying from 2.1, and I approve 2.2.
No, that's the same for me, Anthony, correct?
Yes, yes, Ron, yes.
Same here, staying from 2.1, approved to 2.2.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Communication petitions from the superintendent?
None at this time.
From the Board of Ed? Seeing none? Student liaison report, the floor is yours, ladies.
Okay, so we went back to school and resumed all in-person activities since January 18th. We had the New Jersey's driver's exam completed on January 12th. NHS, Adopt a Family Fundraiser, and Leo's Clubs Coat Drive were both major successes, and Leo's Coat Drive collected many coats and donated them all to Jersey Cares, and NHS collected around $1,300 of gift cards to a variety of stores, restaurants, and services for Mount Olive Service Department. And the PSATs that were scheduled tomorrow were canceled due to bad weather, and MHS mock trial had their first competition, and Mrs. Jennifer Hamilton, the mock trial advisor, said the mock trial team had a very successful inaugural season, competing in two mock trials representing both the plaintiffs and defense in a civil rights suit. We received wonderful feedback about how well the students did, and we're already looking forward to recruiting students for next year's trial, which will be a criminal trial. And lastly, More and Meet Robotics both just started their seasons.
Okay, and I just wanted to add, because Savannah McLaughlin, who's one of our sophomores, was elected as the Secretary for the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. So basically, what she's going to do is she's going to help coordinate leadership training conferences, which are major events held by the NJASC, and she's also going to be involved in regional and national meetings. And MHS is a longstanding member of the NJASC, because it's been an honor school for 34 years and a model school for the NJASC, and she continues to represent our school at the state level, which is really cool. And the annual charity associated with the NJASC is the Manual Cancer Foundation.
Super, is that everything, ladies? Super, questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much, ladies. Superintendent's report, Dr. Zwicki?
Thank you, Dr. President. Shane, if you could allow me to present. It is my honor this evening to have members of our Equity Task Force here with us this evening, who are going to present the work we have done on completing our goals and the next steps that we are going to take, and I'm going to yield the floor to them, and I will present our site here and allow them to unmute and take over, and we're going to begin with one of our students, who will summarize some of the work that we have done.
All right, thank you, Dr. Zwicki, for the opportunity. My name is Suhaev Jawad. I am a senior at the high school and also a part of the Equity Task Force. So the Equity Task Force Committee, something that was formally made this past school year, in fact, this very school year, right? Well, not really. Some say it has its roots way back in 2019, when, just in a small room with maybe two or three people, administrators, just talking about how there needs to be more equity and more diversity in our schools and our teachers. And so that was something that was talked about, but then maybe just put on the back burner. But to be honest, the springboard for this big whole thing was definitely the events of this past summer. And so MO in Color, which was an organization that was created to give students and alumni the opportunity to express their opinions and have hard but honest conversations surrounding equity and race, came in and really supported the students in having those conversations, and so that those things that they would want to talk about would be addressed by the administration as well. That, of course, culminated in the formal creation of this task force, which was made this very school year in September. What you are about to see from us is the work that the committee's members have been doing very tirelessly. And so now, they're going to show you, all the subcommittees are going to show you the goals and deliverables that they have worked very hard upon. So sit back, relax, and enjoy the show.
First up, we have a representative from our Academic Achievement Subcommittee.
Hi, everyone. My name is Leah Margozziak. I am the Instructional Supervisor for ELA 6 through 12, and I have the honor of working as part of the Subcommittee for Academic Achievement. When we started looking, our meeting as a Subcommittee, we started looking at some of the data of which of our groups of students were taking the more rigorous classes, and then we started to find where we were succeeding as a district, and then areas in which we needed to set goals to try to improve and make sure that all means all, and we're going to continue with that. So we discovered that we, kind of through our conversation, that everything centered around three main goals. So our first goal is to ensure an equitable academic recommendation process. Through our discussions, we focused in on making sure that not only having the most rigorous classes available, which I think Mount Olive Township does a great job of with the AP courses, but making sure that all of our students want to take those courses and are given the opportunity to do so. So in order to kind of achieve this goal, we have a couple of strategies that we're planning and focusing on, including utilizing the Personal Success Plans, which were rolled out this year, looking at the individual goals of our students and finding which of these rigorous courses would help support that. We're going to focus on the individual experiences, so all of our students have their own story, they come from their own backgrounds, and all of that makes them unique, so we're going to use that to kind of push them to take some of these more rigorous courses. But on the flip side, we also want to focus on our faculty and staff, and we want to make sure that we're engaging our educators in these open conversations about equities and inequities in the recommendation process, and we're going to work to make sure that that recommendation process is more objective rather than subjective. And then we also want to make sure that our teachers in their PLCs are having these tough conversations, where we're talking about some of our subjectivity when it comes to this, and once we're able to recognize this, we can kind of move on and make sure that we're recommending all of our students. The second thing we want to focus on, and obviously this has become, I think, a bigger issue this year, but we're going to try to reduce absenteeism to increase academic achievement. So we would like to reach out to our Guidance Department, and we're going to institute Guidance Counselors scheduling meetings for all students, to make sure that they are talking with these students, finding these individual goals, and looking for areas in which we can kind of promote success for these students. We want to obviously continue to provide supports to meet these expectations. We would like to institute some mentoring, both with student-to-student, peer mentoring, and then also for teacher or staff-to-student, and then we're going to look to utilize our personalized learning plans to create and track attendance goals for our students. Finally, we want to make sure that our high expectations that we have in the Mount Olive School District extends to all of our students. In order to do that, we want to begin to, or continue to, train and give our teachers and our staff, excuse me, opportunities to promote this with our students. So we want to promote action research opportunities for staff, and the reason for this is we would like to strengthen the cultural competence of each adult in the school. We need to continue to provide the supports, both for teachers and for students, so students can meet those high expectations. This is another area where we would like to utilize mentoring. And then we cannot begin to have these conversations if we don't really explore the issues of privilege, power, and difference, and continue to utilize those PLC meetings to have open dialogue for tough conversations. So really, in our meetings in this Subcommittee, these were the three goals in which we focused on. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And next up, we have our Disciplinary Policy Subcommittee.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Robinson, and I'm the Director of Elementary Education for Mount Olive Township School District, and I had the privilege of chairing our Disciplinary Policy Subcommittee. So when we took a look at our disciplinary policies, we began by evaluating the Civil Rights Data Collection, the most recent one, and then we designed actions to address inequities in disciplinary action. So we took a look at in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and referrals to law enforcement, and we broke those down by race, ethnicity, and IDEA status. And in doing so, we came up with some goals and strategies to try to reduce inequities moving forward. So our first goal was to solicit input on disciplinary action best practices via committee oversight and input. And what that's going to allow us to do is to get stakeholder input, and our stakeholders are going to be representative of the school communities in which they work, and they're going to be able to provide input into disciplinary actions, and it'll allow transparency and access to the actions as they occur in real time, so that way administrators can get feedback and, you know, evaluate that data as it happens. Our second goal is to ensure uniformity in disciplinary referral entries into the district's student information system. So in our research, we found that there was a lack, you know, between our schools with a consistent practice in entering disciplinary data, and we need good data in order to track it. So by creating a system by which we enter that data and make sure that we enter everything, everything from something like an official warning all the way to school removal, you know, we don't want the tendency to have a kid that goes into the office that gets in trouble and gets a slap on the wrist, it doesn't get written up or logged because they're a good kid, you know, while other entries get logged. We want to make sure we have all of that data so that it's actionable, and that'll be a positive first step, is getting the most accurate data possible. And our third goal was to utilize behavioral RTI and restorative practices to assist at-risk students and reduce disciplinary action, so taking a proactive approach to discipline and progressive response to problem behaviors. So we want to identify students first, who are at risk for social-emotional behaviors via universal screening, and be using the Saber Screener for that, and you may have heard of that, members of the board. And we're also going to have three tiers of intervention, universal, selected, and targeted, and for each of those levels, we have a menu of evidence-based supports that we can use to assist kids, you know, as they face disciplinary issues. We also want to ensure that all staff are fully trained in this model. We're going to support teachers in best practices in classroom management, and we're going to also, we'd also like to provide new students, students who are new to the district, with mentoring, so that they can become better acclimated to Mount Olive. So overall, a whole system of wraparound supports for our students to reduce overall disciplinary actions, and the other prong of the approach is to evaluate the actions that are happening as they're happening, so that we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and next up, we have the Inclusive Curriculum Subcommittee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Hareska, and I'm the Social Studies Department Chair, and I was on the Inclusive Curriculum Committee, so I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we discussed. The Inclusive Curriculum Committee met over the course of the last few months to discuss our current curriculum as relates to equity and diversity. A comprehensive curriculum audit will take place over the next 12 weeks to review our curriculum and to ensure that all core contact areas include resources and materials that will address diversity. We will be utilizing the analytic tools of Rubicon Atlas and conduct a standards alignment, equity, and diversity audit. It's also our committee's goal to increase our elective course offerings for a deeper study of diversity on topics and issues that have shaped our local, national, and global societies, and that's basically what we decided to do, in a nutshell, to really increase what we offer at all the schools, and to make sure that diversity is included in all of our curriculum.
And I think we have some other members from that Subcommittee on the call, too, if they want to make any comments about this Subcommittee. This committee definitely has, as you can see, a lot of strategies there. I don't know if any other members from this Subcommittee wanted to make any comments real quick.
Hi, Ken. I was on the committee as a parent, Jeannie O'Neill. I'm just a parent, and I'm president of the CPAG Special Parents Advisory Committee. We really did, they really did look at every aspect of the kids' mental health, physical health, well-being, and, you know, emotional well-being, and that was really important for me, to hear that they were, you know, taking all those things into consideration and including them in curriculum.
Thanks, Jeannie. And next up, we have the Relationship Building Committee.
How you doing? Saraj Ziad, high school teacher, special education, and our newly put in place African-American Studies course as well. I have the privilege of being on the Relationship Building Committee, and we were able to take a look at the DARE tool and analyze that, because we really recognize that relationship building is one of the key aspects to student success, their comfort with students. The staffing and student comfort level is very important, and getting to know them beyond just who they are in the classroom is very important. So we decided to take a look at how our relationships are already built, and some things that we decided we want to do, as far as Goal 1, was revise and readminister the school climate and culture survey, just to make sure, use it as an instrument to make sure student equity and positive relationships with the staff and teachers are being built. We were able to take a look at the previous survey, and we revised it and distributed it to all the staff and students as the plan for February 2020. We also plan to make one that is more level to elementary students, so when they take it as well on their own, they can read it, it's not adult-level reading, it's something that they can understand and make modifications that way. Goal 2, we wanted to make sure that--
Real quick, for that first one, it's Parents of February 2021, right? Not 2020?
Yes, that should be 2021, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, I thought that's where you meant.
Yes, it was distributed in 2020, and we're doing it again in 2021.
Okay.
So Goal 2 was to collaborate with the High School Tapestry Program and replicate the program for the middle school and elementary schools, starting in March 2021 this year. The goal, the idea, strategy there is to have the middle school and K-5 students create a sister program of the MOHS Tapestry Program, and the MOHS students will work with the elementary and middle school students in order to share their experiences and act as mentors for the program going forward. Another thing that we believe that was a great goal was to provide staff with training on how to support students by building positive and healthy relationships. Some of the strategies that we wanted to do were to provide our staff with three 45-minute trainings in September, January, and May on how to support the students by building positive and healthy relationships, as well as provide implicit bias training to all the staff by October 1st of 2021 year, this year, this year coming up.
Excellent, thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, we have the Diversifying and Training Staff Subcommittee.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle Kay. I am an English teacher at the high school, and also a member of the Diversifying and Training Staff Committee. One of the things that we really felt strongly about is that not only did we want to recruit and recruit a diverse staff at Mount Olive Township, but really to enhance the structures that we have in place to support our current teachers. So if you look at our goals and strategies, everything we have really speaks to that. So our first goal is to identify, recruit, and retain a diverse staff in Mount Olive Township. Right now, across the board, our staff is largely homogeneous, so we looked at some data that was available through AppleTrack, just looking at the types of people that are applying to the jobs, and so we want to look at just reviewing our hiring practices through a lens of diversity, equity, inclusivity, and accessibility. We want to attract highly qualified teachers, but at the same time, it's really important, and our students deserve a staff that reflects the diversity that we see in our student body, and right now, that's just an area that we really need to work on. So to that, we want to look at some board policy and regulations related to hiring, we want to work with the union to look at contract language, we want to look at putting together a training manual for staff, offering both in-person and online professional development opportunities, along with other required trainings on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which will include all staff, so anyone who is a staff member at Mount Olive Township would be involved in these trainings. The next thing, and the thing that we're working on, I think, the soonest, is enhancing the recruitment of underrepresented groups within our teacher and administrator ranks. So to that end, I know there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes right now, and you might hear more about this a little later, I think, with career fairs and putting out some PR materials and just letting people know a little bit about Mount Olive Township. One of the things we were wondering, are going to continue researching this, because we don't really have the answer yet, is why isn't Mount Olive already more diverse? Why aren't we attracting a more diverse applicant pool? So we really want to work on getting career fairs going that are speaking specifically to diverse groups, and so to that end, we're working with different colleges and career fairs. And then finally, we want to strengthen and develop systems that support our training, and we're going to start with our mentoring program. We want to expand that to be longer than one year. For first-year teachers, that first year is really just trying to figure out what the heck is going on, so we want them to have a mentor program that's more robust and allows for them to have those conversations and feel supported, and not just like, well, we had you for one year, now you're on your own. And then also, we want to extend that out to putting together some affinity groups for our current staff, where they could get together and talk about different issues that relate to their demographics, as well as doing a better job of just gathering demographic information on current employees, which again, is something that's going on behind the scenes right now. So that's a quick overview of what we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and then we're going to have a nice summary from Suhaev to bring us on home.
For Mount Olive community, we must be responsible for not only ensuring equitable practices, but to teach and appreciate diversity with our peers and staff alike. As a school system, we are the critical voices who mold and influence students from preschool to 12th grade. The reform that we institute must create standards to which we, as a community, should adhere to, to ensure that each and every one of us is represented and seen. In the past few weeks and months, and as you've seen on this, on all the subcommittees that I've shown you today, we've created achievable goals and deliverables to ensure that our recruiting process and training methods are focused on diversity and equity. We've honed in on academic achievement measures to give every single student a chance and a healthy support system. We've instituted uniformity in disciplinary actions, behavioral RTI, while addressing at-risk students. We plan on revamping our curriculum so that there are opportunities for students to study through differing lenses. We also are creating a culture where relationships are key between staff, students, and administration alike. Going forward, we're going to be instituting bi-monthly meetings that will be around two hours long, to allocate time for each Subcommittee to get feedback on the work they have been pursuing. This is in addition to our monthly meetings, that allow our members to come together and review our group goals. The Mount Olive Equity Task Force is committed to fostering a diverse and inclusive environment within our school district and greater Mount Olive community. We have a lot of work to be done, but our mission is to establish real change as a task force. Thank you for your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and on our site, you can see the list of all of our members who participated. The real, you know, stars of the show were our students, so I want to thank them and everyone who participated, the board members who participated, and thank you guys for all this work, and, you know, in this work, we're never going to get to a point where we can say, that's it, we're not going to attend to this anymore. The idea is that we have a dashboard where there are deliverables each year, and this is work that we just continuously do in perpetuity. So I thank everyone for their input and feedback, and I look forward to reporting out and working with everyone going forward.
Is that everything, Dr. Zwicki?
I believe, you know, Dr. Gales had indicated he wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm not asking, I'm asking you, is that done for you?
That's correct. Yes, that is--
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Yep, so--
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. So now, yeah, as one of the board members who participated in a couple of groups, I have to say that the discussion and dialogue was very energetic, and we have a tremendous group of staff and students and parents who are tremendously engaged and invested in this process, and that's refreshing to see. I'm happy to let our community know that this just isn't a school project, this is a community endeavor, where the entire community is going to be involved in this changing of the hearts and minds, and that second-order change to bring about not only just racial diversity, but gender diversity and religious diversity. So we're going to be working very hard as an entire community, and I also would like to thank everyone, and I'm looking forward to seeing how the strategic plan turns into actual actions that are going to bring about the kind of inclusion and equity that we have been planning for. So, good job, everyone, thanks for including me, I had a great time, and looking forward to the journey ahead.
Any other comments from board members?
Yes, Anthony?
Yes, Mr. Strelachi?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody, that was a tremendous undertaking you've done, and I can see that a lot of work has been put into it, and I applaud you. I have a couple of concerns. Over the years, we have built such a tremendous curriculum in Mount Olive, we have added so many classes, so many different programs. My concern is that if we're going to continue to add these programs to our curriculum, if there are one or two or three, however it's going to be, what will be coming out of the curriculum? Because there's only so many classes in a day, and these kids are having a hard time choosing what to take. So that's one of my concerns, if you can answer that one first.
Sure, I'm happy to do so. So, a couple of things. One, the idea being that, particularly when it comes to inclusive curriculum, that we're being inclusive in our core subject areas, that the solution is not always just adding extra electives, and that speaks to the Almazad Holocaust mandate, we're also looking at, you know, what text we're using, what resources we're using, and being more inclusive in that manner, not necessarily just adding to the course catalog. The other thing is looking at being creative with, one, what are the current graduation requirements, and where, you know, right now, there are certain required courses that are kind of standard courses that have been around for 40, 50 years, and how can they actually, instead of doing a year-long course in social studies, maybe you can replace that with two elective courses, something along those lines. So, you know, the idea is not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but to get more creative with it, but I can't, you know, state enough that it's not just adding on electives, that kids take in senior year, when we talk about inclusive curriculum, it's about being inclusive, you know, racially, religiously, gender-wise, and also-- also, uh, you know, cognitive differences as well, you know, starting in pre-K and kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. That's not just senior electives.
Also, with the idea that, uh, we are in remote learning most of the time now, we don't know how long it will be, it seems to me that it's, it's a very difficult challenge to, uh, start, uh, changing the culture, uh, you know, adding to programs and things like that. How are we going to, uh, start to infuse that with all this remote learning?
So, s- a lot of these things that we have been doing, for example, we were one of the districts, first districts in the LGBTQ pilot, you know, that started last year. So this year, we're starting to internal, you know, institutionalize that. When it comes to some of the larger shifts, that's why the, the work of the committee is that it's not going away, and we're going to continue to look at this audit so that it's where we can start making implementation now happen, or in a reality through PLCs, we do so. And that's the beauty of our curriculum mapping model. It is a living curriculum where we can add new resources along the way, and it's not that we just update the curriculum once every six or seven or eight years. So that's, that's the short-term answer. The longer-term answer is that we're using the tools of Rubicon Atlas on an annual basis to audit our curriculum, where we can make these changes over the summer each year, so we have a fresh curriculum, um, starting every September.
Thank you. Do we have question or comments for the board?
I just have one more quick question. Um, so are they doing anything with, I know that there's, these classes have been added as, um, extra kind of, kind of elective classes, I guess they were taking. Are they doing anything in the general education curriculum to enhance or extend the learning? Like, I know been many different grade levels, and US history has done grade level, middle school, again in the high school. Is there any way to kind of extend or kind of insert some of this program into the general education curriculum?
And, and that's e- exactly our primary strategy. So, you know, one of the things that we did in our first round of curriculum mapping that took place about two years ago, we ensured that we were, you know, compliant with the Amistad Commission as well as the Holocaust Commission, but this goes beyond that, right? So that, that is the bare minimum, and to go beyond that. So that's exactly the work we're talking about doing, that it is implemented and extended in, in the current core curriculum, if you will, and that it, we're not just adding on electives. So we have seen that with our teachers infusing resources from the Guild of Laramie Institute, um, the Guild of Laramie Institute, which is dedicated to students interacting with primary source documents and not, and not using, you know, what might be biased textbooks or other sources. Um, through using, you know, programs like the Brown University Choices Program, the DBQ Project. So these are all examples of things that we're tapping into, and also, you know, dating back to about a year ago that we are implementing this year, also looking at our texts, you know. Uh, our executive director of personalized learning, Lisa Schlier, did an, you know, amazing job really working with, you know, what, what is the diversity of our texts. This summer, um, we actually went through a process with the NAACP of Morris County of, of going through this process where they're looking at schools and actually giving them a score based upon this, and they were extremely impressed with that. Uh, I think another example of what we're doing is we have our African-American History Pilot, which is a professional development program for our teachers, which is focused on bringing all those resources into the core curriculum, so that kids do not have to wait to be exposed to some of these topics until their senior year. Um, so the idea is that this is happening at all the grade levels, and so we're going to be attending to it and attending to it. Um, but, you know, having the baseline of Rubicon Atlas allows us to do this, because once again, we have a living curriculum where our PLCs can make updates in real time.
And last quick question. I know there was talk about extending the mentor program. Uh, my only concern is who's going to foot the cost of the mentor extension? I know first-year teachers, normally the teacher's the one that pays the mentor. Is it something that the district would pay completely, uh, work with the teacher, or would be the responsibility of the teacher?
So the idea being that that would fall under our professional development efforts. Um, every year, we use Title II funds. We also, um, budget, you know, as per the feedback we received during the CUSAC process, so that would all come out of our P, our current PV allocation.
Okay. Thank you.
No problems. Is there any other question or comments for the board? Seeing none, thank you. Dr. Zwicki, Personnel Committee report, Ms. Cohen?
Sure. The Personnel Committee met, uh, tonight, actually, uh, prior to this meeting. Uh, on the, at the meeting were, um, Anthony Giordano, John Kemna, Dr. Zwicki, and Kim Marcus. I forgot anybody? Anybody?
No, I wasn't on this, Cohen.
What's that?
I wasn't on that meeting.
You were not on. Okay, Anthony was not on. So it was Kim, John, Rob, and me. Um, we talked about a variety. We had a few confidential items that we were unable to talk, and I am unable to talk about that are going to be in a closed session. We talked about our, the usual leaves, resignations, and retirements. Um, we talked about some reorganization of secretarial positions. Um, we've been looking at, uh, trying to increase the efficiency in the secretarial pool, so we're going to be looking at that and doing some reorganizations as a result. Um, we talked about the employee assistance program, which will, um, we talked to our insurance broker about, um, adding a program which will be accessible to employees for any problems they may have, um, any issues at home and, and on the job, those types of things. Um, we talked about, um, some part-time aides moving to, um, full-time, uh, starting in February, and that was based on an analysis that was done last year. Um, from a financial perspective, it makes sense. Um, we talked about, um, some leave, uh, floating leave replacements, um, and there's a list of folks that will be a part of that. Um, a job, uh, description update in, uh, in the maintenance department, uh, some staffing updates. Uh, Dr. Zwicki gave us an update on our current staffing, uh, based on who is in, uh, due to COVID. And then, um, we are going to be having a recruiting plan, uh, presentation, and we have moved that to February 8th, which, so that will be for the entire board. Again, we will look to do that hopefully on February 8th at our next meeting. I think that was it. Anything I missed, uh, John, Rob, Kim?
Perfect.
Okay.
Question or comments for the board? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Cohen. And Ms. Cohen, is that, is that closed session for this meeting or next meeting?
Next meeting, Rob.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Giordano, I do have one question.
Yes, Dr. J, go ahead.
I know it's, it's early in the year. Uh, can we, uh, start putting up the personnel agenda this year? It, it, or at least the, an outline of what's going to be discussed in personnel? I know we talked about it last year.
We did it last year, Dr. Gels. I've been sick all this week, so I have not had a chance to talk to Ms. Cohen about it. But yes, we will continue the same thing we've done last year. I just didn't have a chance to, to tell her about it. I'm just getting on my feet now, but yes.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Uh, Creaking the Technology, no other committees met. Um, Board Subcommittee Liaison Reports, did anyone meet?
Say it again, Anthony, what was that?
Board Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Anybody?
No.
Parent Teacher Association Reports?
Yeah, I've got one.
All right, Mr. Shalachi?
Planners PTA met on Wednesday the 13th. Uh, as you know, it's been a very, very difficult year with pandemic and remote and everything, but they keep forging ahead to whenever, whatever they can just to keep supporting the kids. Uh, they, uh, you know, they had fundraisers that, uh, they, they tried to do the best they could with, uh, but, you know, everything is being remote. But they had a holiday boutique. They brought in a couple hundred dollars. They had a fifth-grade fundraiser. They brought in another couple hundred dollars. Um, they will try, they will try to have a spring, uh, book fair, and they're going to try to have it outside in the tent. Uh, they're looking to have a, a, an eighties fundraiser. Um, and they're still trying to plan for mother and son and father and daughter dances. They had discussions on a clothing drive, variety show, tricky tray. Uh, they, uh, they're, they're buying a nine-foot Christmas tree as a, as a school gift. They will be giving out a thousand-dollar scholarship at the end of the year. Um, and they're making a collage of the students' in activities for the yearbook. Um, so as you can see, they've been active as they possibly can. They're, um, you know, it's an amazing thing. You, you, like, we meet virtual also, and, uh, you can see that they just want to get into school and, and do things and what have you, but I give them a lot of credit. They're, they're all staying involved and doing whatever they can to support the children. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Shalachi. Question or comments from the board? Any other, uh, PTA, uh, Parent Teacher Association Reports?
I have one. Oh, uh, Dr. Gels, you go first.
I'll defer to you. Go, go right ahead.
I appreciate that. Uh, so the Mount Olive High School Parents Club met on Tuesday, January 19th. Uh, the Student Councils, uh, had spoke, the Key Club spoke, and Leo's Club spoke. Many of the, uh, things that they had brought up were brought up here in this meeting, so I'm not going to cover them again. It was nice to see. I think the Leo Club said they had collected a hundred gently-used coats to assist students, uh, to, with their nutrition cares. Uh, Student Council had stressed a concern about Spirit Week participation. Um, I know during this time, this would be a great time for, uh, kids to be a little bit more spirit, try to get everybody's, um, you know, back into the groove of thing, a little bit more normalcy. The same as Dr., uh, excuse, as Mr. Shalachi was saying, the fundraising for the parent club was a little difficult during this time. Uh, the biggest fundraiser they have so far is joining. It's the biggest source of revenue. It's only fifteen dollars, and I encourage all parents to join. Um, Senior Signs, however, will be on sale soon. Uh, that information will be sent out shortly. Uh, Mr. Moore's report discussed the, uh, the in-person learning coming back, uh, and then the possibility of mid-February, but we all know things can change quickly and easily based on developments. Uh, but fingers crossed, uh, they will be foregoing core release, uh, just with the academic equity during the current learning model. Um, individual assessments will be an alternative. They will also use Lincoln testing to kind of, won't be impact grading, but will help to assist in placement, getting an understanding of where their students are. Uh, Dr., excuse me, Mr. Feltman, Vice Principal Student Services spoke, uh, during the meeting. He gave a great presentation and discussed scheduling via real-time. Uh, I definitely would advise parents to kind of join these meetings. There's a lot of great information that is provided. Um, scheduling will be delayed. From normally, it's late December to early January. Uh, not exact time right yet, yet, but, um, should be after this semester. Uh, it's actually kind of a good thing that it's delayed just because of, uh, stu- teachers are getting a better chance to evaluate their students' ability during this time. Um, the, two students will be taught in social studies class about scheduling requests. Um, there are new changes to the names. When the scheduling does come out, just to be advised to all our parents out there, that you will see the legacy names of the classes in parentheses. Um, the, there were additions made to the scheduling, uh, scheduling. They were talked about here, which I have to tell you, um, for all of our, our task force, uh, members, a lot of accolades on the call. Many people, including myself, are very happy to see these classes being added. Uh, one of them was an additional math class that wasn't discussed tonight, but it's advanced topics in calculus, which will aid, uh, which added to address that students that kind of have gone through accelerated math programs from the middle school to the high school. There was kind of a lapse at the end of their scheduling, but this will address that. Uh, one that I loved was the additional unified classes. Um, they're adding two classes. In those classes, marauders with and without cognitive and physical differences will mentor each other in inclusive and collaborative environment in the areas of physical education, robotics. There are four new history classes that Mr. Reska was speaking about. Uh, the history of the Holocaust, the gender studies, the African-American studies, and the Native American studies. Very excited to see those in practice. Um, again, these changes, a lot of people getting accolades on the Google Meet, discussing how great, uh, it was to see these. One of the things, there will not be an eighth-grade presentation. Um, excuse me, there will be an eighth-grade presentation in February, but it'll be different from the eighth-grade orientation of the past. With scheduling teacher recommendations, we'll take priority of student requests. I need every parent to understand that. Um, so it's good for your students to reach out to their teachers and get their opinions coordinated with them on what they're recommend, what they feel that they'll be able to do with scheduling. Uh, changes can be made later, but it's going to be via counselor meeting after enrollment. Uh, their next meeting will be held on March 23rd. I suggest people, um, join. First of all, join the club. Also, attend these meetings. There's a great amount of information being provided to high school parents. Um, and it's only fifteen dollars to join, and it's well worth it. I mean, if you really think about all the fundraisers you give your child right now for a dollar here for some donuts, or buy this for some flowers, you're spending way over fifteen dollars. And I feel it's a, it's a great cause. So that is it for the parent meeting for the high school.
Chris, you can call me doctor if you want. We just have to find what I'm a doctor of.
I call everybody doctor. There's only one person, I, my friend, I, I, I can't, uh, I can't get over calling him doctor, but I'll get over it.
Thank you, Mr. Zire. That was a plethora of information, very lengthy for your first report. Very impressive.
I'll trim it down, but right now, more information's better.
Any other, any questions or comments for the board members? Seeing none, Dr. G, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the CMS SCA met, uh, January 12th, and, uh, they had a new member, Rajesh Kumar, who was new to Mount Olive and has a first grader at CMS, so he was warmly welcomed by the group. Uh, they talked about, uh, many of the fundraising activities, and, uh, just as Mr. Shalachi said, many of the associations are, uh, struggling because of COVID. But, uh, in, uh, January, the end of this week, they're looking to, uh, have a dance-a-thon. Hopefully, they've worked out how to, uh, do that logistically. They're looking at a book fair in February along with the Valentine's Day fundraiser. The Candygram seemed to have gone, uh, over very well in past years. In March, uh, they're looking to do a virtual talent show. April, the virtual science fair to coincide with Earth Day, and possibly in March, another chocolate sale. And yesterday, they had their gold fundraiser, their gold event in Hackettstown, and anyone who participated, ten percent of the sales, uh, went towards the, the fifth grade graduation. They're looking to have a Scholastic Book Fair, uh, starting February 22, uh, going through March 7th, and then again, possibly in May. And they also want to do Treps again and transform it into a virtual fifth-grade marketplace. I did share with them, uh, some of the work that the Equity Task Force is doing and how it's going to be a, a community-wide event, and if, uh, they had any, uh, recommendations or suggestions for the task force, uh, they could, uh, share those, but also to look out for the upcoming, uh, parent survey. And one of the, uh, parents brought up that she loved the book club that the superintendent is doing, uh, reading the, the book Why Race and Culture Matters in Schools, and their next meeting is February 9th. And, uh, I just happened to sit in, I don't know if, um, uh, Mr. Stevens, uh, sat in on the, the middle school, but if not, I sat in on that and can report on that if he didn't.
I did not.
Okay, so I, I, I sat in on the, the middle school PTO on the 20th. And again, there were some, some membership concerns, um, and, uh, they were asking individuals if they were interested in becoming members. You can go to the district website, the parent section, and, uh, click on the Moms PTO. You can pay online or send a check to the office that's clearly marked Moms PTO. Uh, the membership is ten dollars and fifty cents. Uh, unfortunately, due to, uh, low fundraising, uh, they will not, uh, do the teacher grants this year, but they will do, uh, the teacher appreciation as well as, uh, an eighth-grade dance. Uh, they talked about their elections because, uh, they have a, a couple of parents who are transitioning from the middle school to the high school, so they want to change their bylaws and, um, bring on new, uh, recruits to train them now, so that they'll be ready to take over as officers, uh, next fall. Mr. Kramer gave his report. He stated that there was a good start to the cohorts coming back. Uh, he explained some of the logistics and how the school day progresses. Uh, there was some discussion and questions about real-time, about Picture Day, which started on the 21st, and, um, we again talked about the Equity Task Force, and they listed some of the other, uh, spring activities, uh, the fundraising activities, including the Spring Spirit Ware, the eighth-grade yard signs, look out for those in March, balloons in June, uh, for the eighth-grade graduates, the Spring Fling, which will be in May or June. It'll be outdoors, and they're anticipating doing one for each grade, and an eighth-grade masquerade ball. And that concludes that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gels. Any question or comments for the board? Thank you, Dr. Gales. Any questions or comments for the board? All right, seeing none, moving right along. Anyone else? No? Okay. Board President's Report. I just want to report out to the board that now that Dr. Zwicki has the district, you know, back in session with live students in Cohort A and B, I had a discussion with him as we were going over, not over break, after break, after the reorg meeting. Now that heavy lifting's over, I asked him, per the request of some board members and conversations with them, to have his superintendent's report out to the board Friday evening, the latest, and he concurred with that. So we're looking forward to that. I know since we went to lockdown COVID, he's been dealing with a lot of, lot of things, and then we've had discussions about how to get that information or what time to get the information out to the board. So we can expect to start getting those starting this week on Fridays by the evening at some point. So I just want to make the board aware of that. Public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and/or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Please stand up or just state your name and address for the record on any action items from 6.1 all the way down to 9.2. Action items only. Seeing none, Lynn, closing to public comment, as well as we don't have any questions in the email early in the afternoon. Do we, Lynn, from on action items?
Not on action items.
Thank you. Approval of monthly expenditures and reports, Ms. Wimatt, if you'd be so kind to move?
Oh, I don't want the camera. I make a motion for approval of the monthly expenditures, 6.1 and 6.2.
Second.
Well, I think that's 6.8, Ms. Wimatt.
Well, I can't see anything more than that.
Okay, so it's 6.1 to 6, 6.1 to 6.8.
1 to 6.8. No one? Thank you.
Question or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mrs. Wimatt?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Shalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales? Dr. Gales?
You're muted. You're muted, Antoine.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, sorry.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
And Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Personnel action items, Ms. Cohen?
Like to make a motion to approve personnel action items 7.1 through 7.22.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment on 7.1, 7.2. I had the privilege of being taught by both Mrs. Jones and Mrs. McLaughlin. It's very sad to see them retiring. The 7.2 made my wife cry as she was her soccer coach. So I wish them luck and happiness in their next step or next adventure in life.
I'd like to echo that, too. Mrs. Jones was my daughter's basketball coach. So to be with us, both of them, 34 and 35 years, that says a lot for them and Mount Olive.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Muted. Muted, Antoine.
Dr. Gales, you're muted.
Sorry. Abstained from 7.10. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimatt?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Shalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
And Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Mr. Kemna, finance and operation action items?
Sure. The recommendation of Superintendent, move finance and operation action items 8.1 through 8.6.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just, just a quick one about, thank you, about the RFP for telecom services.
8.2?
Yeah, it's 8.2, yes.
Yes. Can we get a little bit of information about what that's about? Is there an issue or concern?
Sure. We had discussed this in business. I'll let Gail get into the details on it because she's working on it.
Hi, everybody. So currently, what we're paying for our WAN, WAN services, is actually less than what they are offering at ESCNJ, which is actually a co-op. So in order to go back and get those same type of rates, we have to just go back out for like a bid. So this is just to allow the E-rate company to go out, put it out, and bring it back in. There's no, we're not going to lose any service. It'll be another 36-month agreement, and we're probably going to pay the same as what we're paying now. We just have to go out because the price is lower than what's in the co-op. It's kind of weird.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, hand raised.
Oh, yes, Ms. Wimatt. Thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit more clarification on 8.6 with the CMS specs.
Sure. So Anthony Jean Ficaro, our architect, last year, we went out to bid for this, and then we didn't go forward with it because we deferred the projects because of the pandemic. So we had discussed this in finance at the last board meeting to authorize Anthony to do the bid process. We went through the whole bid process. We thought everything was done, and then it was discovered by Joe Rizzelli that there was some missing required documentation for the bid process, which undermined the process. So we just have to go back out and do it again to make sure that everything is up to snuff, and I thank Joe for catching that for us.
Okay, this was discussed with Finance Committee, you said?
Correct.
This Finance Committee of this year?
No, in the last month. And the CMS project is something that we put in the budget last year, and then we revisited it, and we actually talked about it at the last meeting, and Anthony Jean Ficaro did a presentation at the December meeting to the Finance Committee. So when it, when it comes to bidding, you know, it's usually, you make those decisions, you know, sometimes two and three months out from then.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimatt?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Shalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Mr. Shalachi, the administrative action items, please?
Sure. I'd like to move on recommendation Superintendent's action items. Is there more than two? Because it's your.
Just 2, 91 and 92, Mr. Shalachi.
Okay, 91, 92.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Shalachi?
Yes.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimatt?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Old business from the board? Seeing, oh, Ms. Wimatt, I apologize.
Do we have any, now that Rhonda's here, any kind of update on the Ed Foundation?
Um, we met, when do we meet, Dr. Zwicki?
We met twice since December.
Yes, and we've had a changing of the guard. So Ryan Schechter is now taking over as president of the Education Foundation, and we are kind of kicking in a variety of various items. Kind of a little bit too soon to talk about it. I don't know if you agree, Dr. Zwicki, but I think it's maybe next meeting?
Sure. I can say we've received a couple of donations, and the whole process with setting up the bank account is happening right now. Those will be donated, I'm sorry, they'll be deposited, and then, you know, the other items that the, you know, the fundraising, things like that that the committee has been working on, I think we'll have something substantive to report out at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano, is there something maybe we can add when we do the subcommittee reports? This could be included?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, Ms. Wimatt. I don't, you know, it's, it's, we don't have a liaison to that. I guess it could be Ms. Cohen. If she fills up to snuff with that, I don't have an issue with that for sure. The board really has no oversight of the Ed Foundation Committee, but.
It's good to know about.
Yeah, I think between myself, Dr. Zwicki, we can, we can take care of that.
No issue with that. Anyone else with old business? New business? Any board members with new business?
Yeah, I don't know if it's new or old. I'm requesting, especially you got me a little concerned with the parent that was at our last meeting. Can we get a number by school of the number of teachers who are currently out by grades, by school? I mean, it seems that, you know, there seems to be a big concern with the questions that that parent was asking about how many teachers are currently not in. I don't want names. I just was looking for numbers.
A number per school?
Sure, by grade, yeah.
Sure. I actually, we reported that to the Personnel Committee this evening, and I have been at times updating the board on that. I can tell you right now, in total, we have 106 teachers who are quarantined. I'm sorry, 106 staff members. Sure, no problem. I can share the spreadsheet right now.
Super. That'd be great.
And Dr. Giordano, just a quick follow-up question. Can that include administrators as well?
Oh, sure. Good point. So we should make it all staff, Dr. Z. Make it easier, I think. All staff, all personnel.
It is.
It's broken down by all personnel. Break it down like administrator, teacher, teacher's aide, things of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. New business? New business? Okay, public comments, 2.1. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mall of School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and or obscene comments will not be tolerated. So anybody, please stand up or raise your hand and ask away on anything going on in the school district. Seeing none, Lynn, I believe we had one parent send an email in with some concerns about our SEL, and I believe she's on the call, if that parent would just like to come up and address the board with their concerns?
Hi. I'm Amy Rubin. I live at 53 All Crest. I have two elementary school students who attend San Shore Elementary. And recently, there was a change to the schedule, which eliminated the 45 minutes of social and emotional learning time. And although some of that time was allocated for additional academic learning time, it seems to be replaced with more computer-based online learning. And so I guess my, my concern that I am seeing is that it's really, there seems to be an excess of computer time at this point and a lack of social and emotional and more personal connection time. And so I was just kind of curious as to, you know, why this decision was made, and maybe kind of understanding a little bit more about how this is going to be kind of remedied moving forward, because I do see the benefits of this, and I do see the need for this, not just for my own students, who, just as a side note, are, you know, completely virtual. So they're, they don't have the opportunity to participate in these social and emotional learning activities outside of their school attraction. And as a parent, I feel like I can easily supplement with the emotional learning component and other academic, you know, components. But where I really struggle is supplementing that social aspect because of the fact that I don't necessarily have the ability to be able to provide that social interaction under COVID guidelines and, and, you know, the limitations that I have as a parent. So that was really what my concern was.
Okay. Dr. Z?
And Mrs. Rubin and I had an extensive conversation about this. Prior to the return to school in January, we had two, it was actually 10 minutes in the morning for the SEL check-in, and then there was another 15 minutes in the afternoon with students coming back in the break. We needed to do a couple of things. One, do some of the benchmarking and some of our tools like Lexia and Achieve 3000, and to get students who were virtual, who were returning to in person, to give them some of that extra support. I did discuss with Mrs. Rubin that we are switching to a schedule on February 16. So right now, students are still getting 50 minutes of SEL a week. Students are getting 50 minutes of SEL a week. We are switching to a schedule on, in mid-February, in which students, besides the 10-minute check-in per day, are going to get an additional 45-minute SEL class each day. One of the five SEL sections is going to be administered by the Guidance Counselor, and then four of the other five are going to be from Sanford Harmony, are going to be prescriptive and unified across the district. One of the reasons why we did this is what we were seeing is that the SEL stuff that, you know, that was going on was inconsistent. And so we want to bring some consistency to that. So these three weeks right now are an adjustment to bring that consistency and actually deepen the amount of SEL time that we have and extend that, but at the same time, get the benchmarking we need right now as we start up a new phase of the Mount Olive Success Academy. And I had reviewed all this with Mrs. Rubin. Our commitment to SEL is 100% full-fold. We just applied for the Learning Loss Grant for the state of New Jersey, and unlike most other districts, you know, we already have our RTI program focusing on ELA and RTI. Our grant focuses entirely on SEL and having a supplemental SEL intervention program, similar to what we do in the Mount Olive Success Academy. We implemented the personalized success plans, which is an SEL activity, which is based off the research of the Harvard Ed Redesign Group. We're the only district in the state of New Jersey to be doing that. So this is in no way a departure from SEL, as we had discussed, but rather, it's about a three, four-week reset to bring greater, greater, you know, uniformity of our application of this. And you're going to see that students are getting, going to be getting 55 minutes per day of SEL time starting on February 16.
Any other questions, Ms. Rubin?
No, not really. I think that there's, you know, a little bit of a discrepancy in terms of like what was currently on their schedule compared to what is on their schedule now. However, I completely understand that, you know, this is a little bit of a reset and kind of a tweaking of the scheduling. I'm glad to see that there will be a curriculum in place to kind of support the teachers, as well as that it'll be coming from some guidance as well. And I'm happy to see that it's going to be something that is continually prioritized, because I think that it was a drastic change from what they were kind of used to, and they sort of, you know, hit the ground running from the moment they logged in until the moment they logged off at the end of the day. And for anybody who has an elementary school student, that's a lot of time in front of the computer. So I was kind of saddened to see, you know, that it was replaced with the blended learning, which was really just more online programs with very little interaction with others. So, you know, some teachers have done a really great job with it, which is wonderful, but we were definitely feeling the lack of it here in my household. And I feel like if we were, I'm sure other people were as well. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Closing, that was all we received via emails from Ms. Rubin. Board and administrative comments. Members of the board may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mall of School District. Ms. Wimatt?
Yeah, the only comment I had was I participated in a Lego competition a few weeks ago with Mr. Chico. First time they did, we did a virtual using real-time, not real-time, Ring Central. I'm sorry, I got real-time on the brain there. He did a phenomenal job, Mr. Chico. We were actually the pilot for the rest of the country. No one else has done this before, so it was kind of neat to do, and we did it all virtually. We each did about six, six teams. Very impressive students, I have to say, even though, you know, not all from our district, but students in general, always impressive to me. But, you know, they were, one came up with an exercise chair, another one came up with a leg device that actually they put out to CVS, and CVS was working with it. So that was, again, very impressive. And also a shout out to Mr. Moore, who did the opening for us, which was, you know, a good job, as he always does. But Mr. Chico was very thankful to the Mount Olive School District and the BOE for their support. But Mr. Chico was very thankful to the Mount Olive School District and the BOE for their support.
Thank you, Ms. Weematt. Mr. Zire? I think you're on mute, Mr. Zire. Oh.
So last meeting, I was remiss in congratulating Mrs. Cohen and Dr. Gales on their election to the board and to thank the voters who voted me in as well. The only thing I'd also like to do is thank all the teachers and administrators that have been working diligently to provide some kind of normalcy to our schools. I know it's a difficult job. Everybody's been doing a great, great at it and doing their part. So you are appreciated. So thank you again. That's all I got.
Super, thank you. Trying to think who's that, sorry if I get everyone, Dr. G? I'm just, we're kind of discombobulated here being on camera.
Thank you very much. The only thing that I have is, and I don't know if this is, I I missed my spot in new business. But if I did, Lynn, you can put this under new business. I'm throwing out for the board's consideration, a retreat with school boards, a virtual retreat, so that we can just reconnect. And for our new and returning members to get some insight from school boards about board functions and the role of a board member. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. G. Mr. Stevens?
I want to second Mr. Zire's statement and, you know, thank the teachers, the administration, the staff. You know, this is a time that, like I've said multiple times and over and over, this is something that I, we've never been through. And to our district, we've done an amazing job, and we keep on going above and beyond every time. And, you know, thank you and stay safe.
Super. Mr. Kemna?
Yes. Just one thing here, the Equity Task Force, impressive, 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 the number of people that are contributing to that. The task force that they've done, the the groundwork that they put together, the foundation. And it's and it's not just done. It's going to be, it's going to continue, and it's going to evolve, and it's going to be ever-changing as it goes in there. But it's amazing the people that have stepped up and volunteered all their time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stolachi?
Just echo what everybody else said, just say I'm just so proud of our community and our Mount Olive School District.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, congratulations to the retirees and good luck. It is amazing to see the longevity. Really does say something for the district, about the district, that these people have been here for so long and served us so well. And also, good to see some sense of normalcy, to use that word, but having the kids, some of the kids back in and cohorts. And let's hope that we continue that path and we get even more and more towards some kind of normal as we head towards spring. So.
And I just, real, real quick, I'd like to echo congratulations to Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Jones. To work 32 years in any job is a feat amongst itself. So congratulations to both of them. I would like to also thank Dr. Zwicki, the administrators, the teachers, and the students and their parents. There is no playbook. There is no past precedence for what we're going through. And I think our district and our community has handled it as best as we can. It hasn't been perfect, and we are figuring things out as we go. And I believe we are, we are doing a stellar job in the county. And not just in our county, but in in the two surrounding counties, Sussex and Warren County as well. I would just like to make a plea to our community members, our parents. If your child has one symptom, a stuffy nose, snivels, you know, I understand we all have to work and people need to go to work, and I and I get that. But with these new guidelines, you know, we're asking, as a district, I do it in my district, please, please, please keep your child home. You know, sending your child in with one symptom could cause multiple students to have to quarantine, staff members to have to quarantine. And that could cause, unfortunately, to a a school not being able to maintain and and stay open, depending on who has to quarantine. As well as, we're one of the few districts, if not one of the few, one of the only districts I know, that offers testing on Thursdays. I would ask parents as well as staff, if you are getting tested, if you feel you you're exposed to COVID and you're getting tested, you know, maybe stay home until you get those results. God forbid, if you go to school Friday and then you find out Friday night or Friday during the day or Saturday that you have COVID-19, that kicks in a whole entire quarantine process. It is, it is recommended, highly recommended that if two unrelated cases in a building are confirmed COVID, that building should shut down for two weeks. So again, these are things we all have to, you know, we're all doing this together as a community. And we talk about community and what Mall of stands for, not just the district, but the community. These are things we have to constantly keep in the back of our mind as as we move forward. So that's all I'd ask for the community to remember. With that being said, we do not need confidential session and a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make that a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night.
Night.